All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. First, is there a motion to seal the executive session minutes from tonight?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And tonight in executive session, we did approve nine homeschooling requests, and those were approved five zero. It's now time for open forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none, we are moving on. So it is time for oral reports. And we're going to start with the schools. And we will go from elementary, middle to high. So Ms. Wilson, if you can come up and give us an update from the elementary school.
Oh, now you can hear me better. All righty. Like to report that we are doing a great job getting the kids in and out of school. We have a number of preschoolers that are now bussing in, probably about thirty of them, little three and four-year-olds arriving on the bus every morning and leaving every afternoon. And they're doing a great job. They're quite independent. They've already learned where their classrooms are with very little needed assistance already. So we're pretty proud of that. We've had an additional acceptance of picnic tables for our lunch tent. So we've now upgraded our lunch, and we're expecting an additional tent this week with eight more tables so we can actually have everybody eating outside at a grade level. So we're looking forward to that. And our hope is, is during the school year, is the teachers can now use those as classrooms. So, and there's ample spacing, so we're very excited about that. Thank you to Dr. Cummings and Steve for getting that to happen. I really appreciate it. And we've had a couple of grade-level back-to-school parent nights. So far, pre-k, excuse me, kindergarten and fourth grade have come. And next week, we're having kindergarten, pre-k, and the following week, first, third, and second grade. And what we've asked is limited family numbers attending. We're spacing them out in the student seats. And each grade level is presenting a common PowerPoint to explain to parents overall general curriculum and uniqueness of each grade level. And it's been pretty successful. And we have started PTO planning COVID-safe events. We are going to go back to having our Sundays on Sunday on, let's see, Tuesday, the twenty-third of September. And they're hoping to do a pumpkin fun run October twenty-fourth, where there'll be pumpkin carving in anticipation of an illumination walk. And they're going to do a fun run. It's going to be a fundraiser, probably the only one we'll be doing this year. And we're hoping it'll be a great event. And they're planning on how to do it COVID-safe. So we're working on the kinks for that. Anything else?
No pizza pig out?
We haven't planned anything like that yet. We're doing one, one season at a time at this point, including enrichment and things like that. They're very anxious to have these events, but we're being very cautious, especially since our kids are the least protected right now. But I'll keep you posted, okay? All right, have a great night, thank you. Or did you have a question, Josh?
The fun run, is that like a road race, five K for the community?
No, I think it's going to be something similar to in the, around the schoolyard. They're going to invite families. I have a feeling it's going to be something to do with that colored chalk dust stuff. And we'll, we'll see how that goes. It's, it's just going to be a kind of a community event for our school. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Any other questions for the elementary school? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we are on to the peer school.
Good evening, everyone. Like Lisa, our opening was really great. It's a joy to have the kids back in school. It's good to see them all. A couple of things, the buses, you know, this year, we've had the high school kids with the, the middle school kids on the same bus. And I have to say, I've been, thanks to Derek and Steve and Dan and myself, we got, we kind of coordinated what that was going to look like and the drop-off behind the bus, and it's really been seamless. Both the drop-off and the pickup, it's really been, I'm out there every morning. And if anything, it's nice to see the high school kids, the kids who are now in high school, because I don't get to see them usually. Now I get to say hello to them in the morning, and the middle school kids getting off the bus. But it's really worked out very well. Our dismissal is a little bit earlier, so our kids are getting on the bus first, and then the high school kids get on the bus and off they go. So it's really, as far as that piece, it's really been really, really nicely done. Looping, you know, this is our second year of looping, and this is really the first time that some of our teachers have been able to experience that. And when asking them, they're like, oh, yeah, it's great. I think they're beginning to see the real benefits of having the same cohort of students for the second time. So you're going to teach the same group of students for two years. And having that, you know, you, you know the students, and particularly where we are now with the level of recovery that we're looking at, they really know the students, they already have relationships with the students and their families. And it's really been a very nice experience, and there's really positive feelings all around the school about that. You know, the safety, we are continuing to be safe. We also are having outdoor lunches in the tent and in the caf, in the picnic tables. But we are somewhat less restrictive, and that feels really good for kids, too. It's beginning to feel like a step closer to what we knew before. And I think that's also really helping with kids' state of mind and feeling joyful about being back in school. Sports is underway. We've had our soccer teams and our cross-country team. Our ever, ever-growing, growing cross-country team is out and about and getting at it, so that's great. And I know you may recall last spring and over the summer, we're talking a little bit our academic recovery efforts. And we've kind of put that in place this year. In addition to the tutoring that we did last spring and over the summer, we added a period this year that allows students to be able to kind of have time to do an extension of math and reading just to be able to look at where they are, just not knowing what the impact of the last eighteen months of education may have on them. And even not this year, but maybe two or three years down the road. So last spring, we started putting something together, worked over the summer with teacher leaders, and then kind of through the summer again, and rolled it out. And so far, it's really been very well received. So those kids who need additional time, we have math lab, literacy lab for kids. We have intensive reading for kids. And we have also kids who are now getting the services for Walton-Gillingham. That, building that extra period in the schedule has really allowed us to give those services in a much more targeted manner. So it's really been a, a nice, a nice rollout. And our open house is October seventh. And we're not sure what that's going to look like yet. We're going to kind of see. We certainly hope we're not sure it's going to be as we used to have it, but we'll have some form of that. And I'll let parents know what that's going to look like as we get closer to the date. That's from the peer school. Any questions?
Mary Ann, are any of the classes being held outside? I know you mentioned lunch.
Oh, yes, lots of classes. Yeah, we have outdoor classroom settings. We have about six or seven outdoor classroom settings. And we have a, a Google Calendar that teachers go in and they sign up for it. So we know who's outside and where's it, yeah, it's, it's used all the time. Yep, lots of outdoor stuff. And kids are still taking, teachers have been great about taking kids outside for mask breaks and things like that. And we have not had a single incident with student, you know, not wearing a mask. If anything, they tend to droop down, and we have to touch our nose and remind them to pull it up. But it's been fine.
And on the buses with the middle school and the high school riding on the same bus? I know some parents were concerned there might be problems, but so far, it's been very smooth?
So far, so good. We haven't had any reports, or we haven't had any incident referrals from the bus drivers or from any kids. I think the presence of me being out there, and I think, and the dean is out there sometimes, that's something we started last year. I think that kind of helps matters, you know? I mean, I don't know what it's like on the bus ride, but when kids get off the bus, if there was an issue, I'm right there. Or she's right there, so they could report it to us immediately. But so far, that hasn't been the case.
Then the only thing I'll say, Diane, is that we recognize that there have been some traffic issues with this new traffic pattern. We're working with the police to solve those, so we hope to get those resolved pretty quickly.
Thank you very much. Great, thank you. Oh, um.
That's all right. You don't, you don't need to come back up, it's okay. I just wanted to acknowledge.
I love the microphone, Josh, go.
I just wanted to acknowledge the opportunities that our students have at the peer school now with additional language options. And I know it's early in the year, but I just wanted to call out the privilege that we have in this community to have that now as, as a brought-back option for our children to explore and experience culture and language in a different way. And I just appreciate that, and thank you.
Yeah, we were happy about offering French, and we've been conversations about maybe in the future, thinking about once we can align schedules more with the high school, we might be able to offer even additional languages at the, at the, at the middle school. Thank you.
Any other questions for the peer school? Okay, thank you very much. On to the high school.
Good evening, everyone. The high school, too, enjoyed a, a nice opening. I want to give a shout out to Steve Gormley and his team. The high school was, it was clean and bright, and they did a fantastic job. So thank you, Steve. So it's great to have the kids back in the building, and they're glad to be back in the building. They seem happier and more at ease. It's just that it's starting off with a really good vibe. And so we're expecting good things this year at the high school. So we had a lot of new additions to our staff this year, and we're welcoming them. And they're settling in nicely to the high school. Everyone's adjusting well to our new start times, as Mary Ann had mentioned. Full sports is up and running with a full slate of games and practices, and that seems to be going really well. Guidance is gearing up for our SAT, PSAT testing day, which is going to be October thirteenth. And that'll be, all school will be taking a test. Seniors will have the option to take the test, or they can work on senior project and some other things they may have going on. So we're excited. Our open house is going to be on the twenty-third of September. We have a senior information night at seven o'clock, Zoom, on the twenty-first. And that's about it. Our first PD hour is going to be October twelfth. But things are going well at the high school, and everyone's excited to get the year up and running.
Great, any questions for the high school?
I just have one, sorry. Did you say the, the PSAT SAT was optional, or just the SAT for seniors?
Just for seniors.
Okay.
Everyone's taking it. The seniors had taken it last year. Some may want to take it a second time, and that's fine. Others may choose not to take it, and that's fine as well.
So is that sponsored by the, the district or the state, the SAT for seniors?
Excuse me?
Is, is the SAT for seniors sponsored by the district or the state?
We do it, so what we do, Josh, is that we do from the district sponsor the fall PSAT and SAT. So we offer the eight, nine PSAT. Then for tenth and eleventh graders, they do the PSAT. Seniors, we encourage them, if they need another SAT score, to do that. And we do fund that in our budget. And the spring is funded by the state. So students have multiple opportunities that are funded by either the district or the state to take the PSAT and SAT. We also started last spring to offer the ACT to students, and we had several students take advantage of that. So we're going to continue to do that this year.
I was just wondering what theater performances, concerts look like in this upcoming year? Will they be in person, everyone back as usual?
So our hope is that they're going to be in person. I know Dan Healy is working hard at trying to make that happen with masking and social distancing and trying to find a venue that would work for everyone. He's done a great job. Last year, during the middle of the COVID, he worked hard at providing opportunities for our musicians and our choral singers to perform. And so we're hoping for musicals and concerts and that sort of thing. And he started that planning process as well.
And just to build on what Mr. Warner is saying, you know, Dan is really committed to building a participation. You know, we do have a little bit of some students that maybe didn't have the opportunity to get as involved in the arts or in music as they would have normally, right? While we were home and, and while we were doing some distance learning. So we're looking for ways to get more kids involved in that way, and he's great at that. He's doing a lot of small-group performances right now, but the big concerts, there are still some health and safety concerns around there. So we're looking for ways to safely do that. You know, one of the things I was going to include my reports, for example, Natalie Portillo just sang at the nine eleven memorial last weekend. She was absolutely fabulous. And so, you know, we really try to get our kids out and performing whenever we can.
Which one did she sing at?
Uh. The town one.
The town one, oh.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the high school?
In, in our football team, we're back in three now. We're not in four, division four anymore.
Yes, they moved up a division to division three, no longer in division four.
Any other questions for the high school? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
We're on to special services, Ms. Denton.
Good evening. I thought I would take this opportunity to share with you some of the programs that you funded during our budget process. You gave us permission to reallocate staff and use funding more creatively in order to meet the unique needs of some of our students and keep them in district. So we, this September, started our clinical day program at Narragansett Elementary School. The program is meeting the needs of students who might have had to go out of district in order to have their needs, needs met. And it also has allowed a couple of our students to return from out-of-district placements back to their home school and be, ride the bus with all of their friends and be with their peer group. The program is supported through a support specialist who works with the students and the teacher along with a part-time clinical social worker that works and provides the group and the support and works on any of the behavioral plans or strategies that are needed to meet the needs of those students. So we're really excited about it. The elementary school, Lisa Wilson, Steve Gormley and the crew have been amazing about creating a space to meet both their academic and social emotional learning needs within a classroom space. So we're excited about that. The other program that we're really excited about is the Narragansett Transition Academy. It is meeting the needs of our eighteen- to twenty-two-year-olds, who typically in the past, we would tuition out of district to programs, and we now have a program in-house. Mary Ann Kirby in the middle school was kind enough to give us a classroom space that has kitchens and washer and dryer. So when you're working on functional life skills, those are really key. Steve Gormley and his crew have been amazing about helping us find furniture and making the space just so user-friendly. And I have visited them a couple of times, and they're just having a great time already. This group is working to build partnerships out in the community. And we already have some businesses that have stepped up to invite our students in to trial, do trial work experiences. And we're excited about that. I want to give an opportunity for Jill to give you an update on preschool.
Hi. Hello. So I just wanted to say, I know Lisa had touched upon our preschool program. It is going really well. We, they are getting, we do, we have about thirty students who are taking the bus. It was kind of a hoot the first day or two, a few tiers, the tiers have diminished by many of them. They're, they do know where their classroom is. They're, you know, this big saying, I'm going to go over there, and they tell you exactly what they're doing. Also, a big hit was pizza on Friday. They didn't realize they could, you know, with the school lunch. So that was exciting for them. So they're doing really well. What else can I say? Oh, a little update on the playground. I'm meeting with the installer for the preschool playground on Friday, so we'll know more about the date for that. Other than that, if anybody has any other questions about preschool?
What, what is our enrollment number right now?
So our enrollment right now is, we have seventy-six students enrolled, so I have two spots available. And then the other spots I have to hold for any students coming from early intervention. And I have heard from two of the agencies this week saying they do have some students that are maybe possibly referred. Yeah.
Any other questions for special services?
Yes. Want to certainly give credit to the creation of these programs for multiple reasons. It's, you know, admirable, one, financially for, for the district, but two, bringing children back to the community, which they, they should be a part of. But I just had two questions. Maybe I just misunderstood. Is the Transition Academy housed solely at the peer school?
Yeah, so there, we had some very specific criteria. We wanted kitchens. We wanted it to be a big enough space so it could kind of be more of a lounge area than a classroom, because they're young adults. We wanted them to have access to a bathroom that wasn't going to be used by other classrooms on a regular basis, so they wouldn't be mixing with, you know, high school and middle school students. And we wanted their own entrance. And after looking at both the buildings, working with both Mr. Warner and Ms. Kirby, we, we were able to land on the room that's at the peer school that's near the cafeteria. So they start their day there, but then they're quickly out in the community for most of their day. And then they come back to debrief. And so it really is, I would call it a high school program, but the space made sense for them to be there. It met their needs better.
Great. My last question, what are the ages of the children in the program at NES?
Say it one more time.
The ages of the children at NES in that program.
Oh, in the NES program, elementary age.
Okay. So you don't, you don't have students then between the elementary age and eighteen that are in either one of these?
No, no, our clinical program is an elementary program only. Our clinical program is an elementary program only. You know, I'll foreshadow that I might be coming back next budget season to talk about growing it, but right now it's an elementary program. That's the, that's the population we identified as having the need for right now.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for special services?
I have one.
Diane?
Melissa, do you anticipate students tuitioning into the transition program? Or what's the nearest one to ours?
The nearest, well, there are other public schools in the area that have their own programs. And then the closest one that we would tuition to is in Warwick. So I think that's something that we need to talk about. Dr. Cummings and I have had some conversations. We said we really want year one to get it up and running, get our students settled, you know, get, start making the connections with the community that we need in order for it to be successful. But then I think there is an opportunity, if we choose to, to begin to tuition students in in following years.
And on the clinical day program, I know you offer so many services before. What are the new services that are under this umbrella?
So when a student is struggling to access their education based on their disability, it is the school department's responsibility to first see if they can meet their needs in district. And if they can't, then they would find a school out of district, pay tuition, and provide it there. Those schools are often, have very small classrooms, and have a very supportive behavioral modification program with clinical supports available to a student at a more regular basis than what would be provided in a typical public school setting. So by us contracting with an out-of-district placement and having their staff work within our elementary school, we're providing that still very structured clinical programming, but within their home school. Now, the bonus of that, there's so many, but one of the biggest bonuses is that as a student begins to self-regulate and access their education more, they can go out for 15 minutes to be with peers. Where, when they're in Warwick, it's really hard for me to get them for 15 minutes, right? It's impossible. So they remain very segregated. But here, there's an opportunity for them to integrate for areas of interest, and our goal will be that they completely integrate once the right supports are in place for them.
So even though their staff of the agency is staffing the program, do they still interact with our teachers?
Yeah, and actually, we did something sort of unique that took a little bit of negotiating. We actually used some of our staff that work with their staff. They wanted to bring all of their staff and not use any of our staff. And we negotiated that we wanted to use our own teacher because we felt that the academic programming would be very aligned with our elementary school if we were to use our own staff.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we are on to school committee reports. Are there any members that have reports to give? Alex, you want to go first?
Sure.
All right, thanks.
So the Knights of the Rockingham March met, and we voted upon six individuals, recognizing these individuals who have given back and served the Narragansett community through service. And what we do is, with the town council's approval, and awarding them the recognition as a knight. And two of our former members, Rebecca Durkin and Frank White, were both awarded this distinction at the Narragansett Town Council meeting earlier this month. Thank you.
Is that your only report for tonight? Okay, right.
Yes, it is.
Because you just got back to school. Great, thank you. Anyone else have any other reports to give? Thank you. All right, so we are on to the superintendent's report.
Great, thanks, Tamee. And the principal certainly covered a lot of what I was going to talk about tonight. So I will just start by saying thank you. Thank you to our principals, and their staffs for getting us open in such a great way. To Steve Gormley and his crew, the schools are in great shape. The unsung heroes of getting open is Julio and his tech crew, getting all the computers out and ready to go. That's a monumental task, as long as all the technology in each classroom and it's been working seamlessly. And behind the scenes, Emily and Karen have been kind of working to, on our hiring, our HR, our payroll, kind of all the logistics. And so, you know, much appreciation for all of the hard work that goes into that. You know, you always say that you know it's going right if no one notices that it's there, right? And, you know, in much of what we're doing, you know, people aren't noticing what they're there. But I just want to call out that they're not noticing because it's working correctly. And so, you know, we're really proud of all of that work that is so critical to our success. You know, we had a great PD days with our teachers. We had an international expert, Karen Hass, who, talking about cognitive rigor and learning tasks, come and work with our faculty for a few days. So that was really exciting and really pushed us to think differently around teaching and learning. So we'll be building on that throughout the year. And thanks to Gail for kind of arranging all of that and getting that going. As Mary Ann noted, the new start time and two-tier bus system seems to be working well. There are some kinks to work out, you know, most notably traffic at dismissal. So as I said, we're working with the police department on that. And staffing remains an issue with transportation. So we do, you know, if anybody watching tonight would like to be a bus driver or a bus aide, please get in touch with us. It's right on the website. We can really use your help. And so, again, they've done a great day of making do and adjusting where we can. But that's certainly a need that we still have. You know, one of the things that we continue to deal with is COVID-19. You know, while we're back in school full swing, we have had several cases this week, most notably at the high school. You know, our nurses have done a phenomenal job, working with Steve and our principals, to do contact tracing, to keep people safe, to give notification. And we are, you know, directly following the guidance of the Rhode Island Department of Health and the CDC in all that we do with that. And, you know, it is a heavy lift for our staff, but we have been doing everything we can to keep everyone safe. You know, I will say that our teachers have been great about reaching out, and will continue to reach out to students who are in quarantine. We've given some guidance to our teachers around, here's how you work with students. So students will be zooming into classes as needed and for some critical lessons. They'll be working with teachers in terms of getting their assignments and through our online platforms. And they will also be getting reach-outs and some tutoring as they need it, as they go through those assignments. So we do have a good plan to support those students. We hope it doesn't happen too often. We had a little bit of a rash of it at the high school this week. But we're hoping that that gets back under control in the next few days. Finally, you know, I'll just conclude with saying we have a lot to look forward to this fall. Our sports are back. It's great to see all the students back in class. And in general, we're seeing, you know, just happy kids. I was talking with two students at dismissal today, two of our plumbing students, actually, who were just telling me how excited they were to be back in school. They're thrilled to be going up to East Providence and going to the training there. And, you know, I was trying to book them already because he can't get a plumber. And, you know, they were really just, they said literally, it's so much better this year already than it was last year. We're just grateful to be here. So that was really music to my ears. And it came with a lot of hard work, but it's really worth it to see the kids back.
Great. So any questions for Peter from anybody? Oh, that could be a record, no? All right, so any other questions about any consent agenda items? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes 5-0. On to the budget report, Karen?
Okay. Expenditures for the two months ended August 31st. And that's 5.03% of our budget. Expenditures and incomparances for the two months, And that's 74.10% of our budget.
Any questions for Karen? Thank you. So we are on to school committee business. Item number one, is there a motion to accept the recommendation the superintendent and the director of finance administration toward the contract to Secocchio and Associates Architects for architectural and engineering services in the amount of $592,566.32? So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Good evening. So this is architectural and engineering for the five-year capital plan that the committee has seen over the last four or five years that we've been working on. So this is the actual design portion of it, which we are excited about. And move forward into some nice construction next summer.
Steve, could you just highlight, so the 8% is pretty standard?
8% is a standard number. They were actually at 8.5, and I wiggled them down a little bit. And the standard, the standard's been 8%. Our construction management also looked at this and went through the numbers and verified that it was appropriate.
That's great. And we, my understanding is that we don't pay this all upfront. It's on, as the work is done?
As the work is done, it's a portion of construction design and construction oversight. So you balance it out, as work progresses, you pay the bill.
So there'll be all five years involved?
It's not a lump sum upfront, it's over the, over the five-year period or four-year period that, as we do the construction, we pay those funds. The architectural portion of it, the design portion of it would be upfront, but all of the other fees would not.
And this figure's just for the upfront?
No, that's the complete project. That's to do all the projects on the list.
Oh.
Design and oversight.
Any questions for Steve?
Just the, through the housing reimbursement, parts of this will be included in the reimbursement application, right?
Correct, yes.
At what rate, I'm sorry, are we at 30% or 35%?
Karen?
35.
And if they can write some health and safety and some other stuff into the project, we potentially can get steps of higher percentages.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. So we are on to item number two. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation the superintendent and the director of finance administration to approve the purchase of a Hobart commercial dishwasher to be installed at Narragansett High School from Kittredge Food Service Equipment and Supplies in the amount of $32,266.05? So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
This is a replacement of a unit that's probably close to 35 plus years.
Wow.
We did a survey, and we minimized the size of the machine and went down. We came down substantially in price for doing that. So this is a complete install fabrication of the tables to fit it. And looking forward to not to have to go fix it every day.
Steve, what do you think the turnaround time would be?
This, this will be vacation period. It's an extended lead time on the equipment right now. So if I had to guess today, I would guess Christmas. Christmas break.
Any questions for Steve about this?
I got a small one. Did you, did I hear you correctly when you said that this includes the, like, countertop, like, fixer?
Yeah, well, just they're going to use what we have, but refabricate it to fit this particular machine.
Perfect, okay. So this is not just the machine, it's like all the whole install, including?
It's the fit-in, it's the plumbing, it's the electrical hookup, it's the venting. It's complete install.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
Was this a master price agreement price?
That is, Kittredge is a, the MH Mass Higher Education Consortium bid that we use.
Any other questions for Steve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion passes 5-0. Thank you. So we're on to item number three. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation the superintendent and the director of finance administration to approve the proposed tuition rates for NES, NPS, NHS, Special Education, and Jamestown for the 21-22 school year? So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
So I'll just kind of put out there, these are something that we do every year. We have very few families, if any, that just kind of come and pay out of pocket, right, to go to the schools. We do have one or two tuition-paying students privately. It's mainly used, and the one I'll call your attention to is for Jamestown, right? And that is with our agreement with Jamestown, where they send their high school students have the option of going either to North Kingston or to Narragansett. We've had that in place for, you know, a number of years now. And so we have a formula where we calculate that for them every year. In terms of our current tech students, that is a formula that's dictated by RIDE. And so while there's been some legislation around that, around adjusting those pieces, that I haven't seen anything yet from RIDE around a new formula. And so we, you know, when we take students from other districts for CTE, they pay us their per pupil. And then when we send students out, we pay our per pupil. Our per pupil is capped at 125% of the average per pupil throughout the state, because we're a little bit high, because we're smaller. And that's true of us, of a Jamestown, of a Black Island, some of the really smaller districts. That's one of the caveats that I was able to negotiate out with in the past. And so we are awaiting those new formulas from RIDE. And so I'll update you when we get those. But Karen, anything else you want to add about how it's calculated?
No, I think that you basically said it all. RIDE does the calculation for each district, and we just send, if, you know, there was a sheet that showed all of the districts sending dollars. And if the student comes from North Kingston, they send what their amount is, and so on. That's it.
Any questions for Pete or Karen?
With the new Transition Academy, we'd have to come up with an amount for that if people start to?
We would. And so, you know, if we, in the spring, do decide to open that up to tuition students, we would have to really look at the cost and transportation. And because it's an 18 to 21 program, it doesn't quite fit in any one of the other buckets. So we would figure out a specialized tuition for that.
Any other questions for Pete or Karen? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes 5-0. On to item number four. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation the superintendent and the director of finance administration toward the contract to install playground equipment and NPS to Compane Playgrounds in the amount of $21,536? So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Steve?
I'm back. This is to install the playground equipment that the PTO at the peer school bought two years ago. And due to the COVID situation, we weren't able to install it. So this is to hire a contractor to install this.
And so what I would say is, at the time, the, you know, school committee wanted to support that work of the peer school PTO, and had committed to providing some funding for that. And we did the site work for that. You know, in the meantime, their fundraising ability has been pretty severely limited by COVID. I think that this is a special case. They are certainly willing to contribute some part of this through the PTO. You know, I would look at this, we have it down as 21,536. You know, that would be the max that would be coming from the school side. We are expecting some contribution. We are expecting some contribution from the PTO, from their fundraising to get this up. You know, we really feel more comfortable having it professionally installed. There is the option of having volunteers do it. You know, we fear that kind of opens us up to some liability if it's not properly installed. And so in consulting with Steve and with Karen, we do think it's worth the investment to make sure that it's installed in the right way long term, to make sure that everything works properly and it is as safe as it can be.
Any questions, Josh?
Yes. So I just wanted to say that, you know, the equipment may have been purchased for two years, but this conversation's been going on for four or five years and maybe even longer, right?
Longer than that, from my understanding.
But it was also coupled with early on, when we when we had the sort of the conversations around supporting that middle school, 20 minutes of unstructured time, not inclusive of lunch. And I'm just curious, with the schedules as they're being redesigned and rethought, if that will, if that the integrity of that time will still be maintained in order for students to truly find joy in this equipment?
Yes. So I think we're we're all strong believers in the middle, as Mary Ann puts it, right? That students need that unstructured time for their social emotional development.
Absolutely.
I think one of the things that we really want students to do is to interact with another, to have that free interaction, to problem solve, to form social relationships without, you know, very someone hovering over them, right? And so we think that's a really important time. This equipment, we hope, will be exciting for our students and help them kind of be imaginative and and, you know, expend some energy as well and really be able to have some fun, right? And, you know, that's what we're really hoping for them. So no, we haven't been infringing on that time. We think it's a critical part of middle school development.
So as a parent in this community, I just want to acknowledge and thank you for for that. And that was some real valuable and emotional conversations early on in my parenting in this district. And I appreciate the attention paid to to that part of our children's well-being.
Any other questions? Alex?
Just a quick question. Once this contract is awarded, how long does it take for them to get going on this project?
Expected early November was the last conversation I had two weeks ago.
And do you know how long it the whole project takes to complete?
Probably about two weeks.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye? Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Steve. And we are on to the last business item. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the proposed FFA field trip from October 26th through October 20th, through October 30th of this year? So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So this is, Deanna, I don't know if you want to come up. So this is our FFA National Convention that our students have gone to every year. They go, it's co-curricular. It is a part of what they do. They engage in competitions. They win awards. We, was it last year or two years ago, we came in second to Texas, I believe? And so, you know, it it's a big deal for that program. Our kids do exceedingly well in this. They do fundraising for it, you know, over a long period of time in order to defray the cost. Any student that is not able to contribute in a way that would enable them to go is certainly, you know, supported in going. And so I've had several conversations with Aaron, now that Greg has retired, you know, in terms of leading this and in supporting our students to go. And so they are all set to make the trip. Anything you want to add? I believe.
Saw your name on that. I was wondering if that was a typo, Dan. What took you so long to wait? He didn't want you going? Yeah, well, that's wonderful. I don't think your microphone's on.
How about now?
Yep, there we go.
They really have a great time when they go out there and they work hard. And you can tell it means a great deal to them, and we're happy to support that.
So Pete, I just have a question about the funding. So can you talk a little bit about that? That the students were allowed to have families, charge money to families for this because this is kind of a?
Yep.
Club. It's not a during the day, where they're missing multiple school days during the day?
Correct. So I'm sorry I didn't specify that earlier. So because this is, the FFA is a club, right? And it really, it's a co-curricular activity, but it's a club. And with that, it falls under the rules where students can fund their own way. So it's not directly tied or leaving the school day, per se. To do that, it's a kind of an outside, even though it's related to the curriculum, it is outside of the school. And so we don't have, for example, a FFA class, right? It's really part of our support organizations. So that's why it falls under the policy where students can fund their own way.
Even if one of your teachers is in attendance during this time and missing, what, three or four days?
Yes. So that's my understanding. So I spoke with our attorneys about it, and he said that we should be okay.
Can I ask a couple more questions? So it's not cost prohibitive. Students who who may not be able to, we're finding alternative ways to support them.
Correct.
So I'm just curious, I mean, I fully support, I think these opportunities are amazing. And we know that our our FFA program is becoming really well-known nationwide. But can you just talk a little bit about COVID safety, rooming, the number of people, what the return policy might look like?
Right. And so this, the FFA has been really great about that, right? And so what our plans are on our end is to test all students before they go to make sure that they are safe in terms of their travel with one another in the van and rooming and that type of thing. So we're going to do our own precautions as as we go through. And then at the actual convention, there is risk, right, without a doubt. And so, you know, no student is required to go. But, you know, these students are understanding that risk. We've been pretty clear about that. And and much like what we have with many of our student athletes, they understand, you know, by participating in this, you are potentially exposing yourself to COVID-19. You know, some of these things may be out of our control. But we feel really good about the the way that the national FFA has structured the convention so that its masks are required, social distancing, you know, lots of sanitizing. So we do feel like they're taking the proper precautions.
What about upon return? Is there a requirement from the district considering they're out of state?
Uh, no, because we don't have that for for travel in general, right? And so we're not going to subject them to a different standard than we would others upon return. You know, we do suggest and would like them to take a test upon return, just to make sure everyone's safe. But it's not going to be a requirement. I will say, these are really great kids and they'll do what we ask.
Any other questions about the trip?
I just had a quick question.
Sure.
I know, and this is a fantastic presentation, I might add. This really breaks down the costs and all the fun activities. It makes me feel jealous that I'm not going on this trip as well. So I'm surprised it took you this long as well. Just a quick question in regards to the transportation for the two 12-passenger vehicles. I didn't see the costs for that listed in the presentation. I just wasn't sure, like, what that's going to look like.
So that's, again, we're not going to charge kids for that. So that's part of what their fundraising does, is to cover the costs for that type of thing.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, and I reserve a couple of vans when we get to Indianapolis.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, and I hope you, I wish you all the best of luck and have a great time.
I'm really looking forward to it. So thank you.
Just actually, a question I was going to ask about the fundraising. With COVID still being around, fundraising is still limited. Are you still, is there? I I trust that you have confidence in that you can still get this fundraising done. But has there been backup plans for it because of pretend? I mean, one of the fires you're having is in October. That's a, you know, relatively close, but still like another month away.
So the FFA fundraises throughout the year. We have our Fresh Egg Fridays that you've heard about. We do the maple syrup in the spring, the plant sale. So that all goes into a fund that helps fund this particular activity, along with other activities as well.
A fun fund, yeah. A fund for fun.
A fund for the fun.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about the field trip? All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Warner. Are there any communications that anyone wants to mention? So our next business meeting is coming up October 20th at 7:00 PM right here. Is there a motion to adjourn at 7:55?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.